I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I should mention to you that after we have an opportunity here, whatever reports are available, I know of course many people didn't meet until the holidays, I will then entertain any questions you may have in writing regarding a docketed item. If it's not a docketed item, it'll go on at the end of the meeting during the open mic session. Okay, thank you.
Clerk offers a following resolution for adoption. Does the Board of Trustees wish to schedule a public hearing to consider amending the code of the Village of Hempstead, Chapter 131, dash 17 vehicle and traffic? Whereas the Village Board of Trustees desires to amend the code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead so as to ensure that Resident Harke is properly administered, and whereas pursuant to Chapter 617.5c, 20 and 27 in SEGRA, regulations amending the code of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead are routine or continuing agency administration and management, not including new programs or major reordering of priorities and complication of the regulations, policies, procedures, and legislative decisions in connection with any type II action, and therefore this proposed action, a type II action, requires no further action pursuant to SEGRA. Now therefore, the Village Board of Trustees hereby schedules a public hearing to be held on the sixteenth day of January two thousand and eighteen at six fifteen P. M. at Village Hall, ninety-nine Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York, to consider amending Chapter 131 dash 17 vehicle and traffic.
So move. Circle.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Rinpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes, and I understand information regarding that is available on the back desk.
And now at this time...
Bill's court, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Information regarding that's available on the back desk.
Yes, the Chapter 131 dash 17 vehicle and traffic, if they wanted to see the attaches in the back on the table.
Thank you, Emily.
And now at this time, we're going to have the presentation of activities report from public bodies of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead by Mayor Ryan, Recreation and Parks Commission, Human Relations.
I have a report. I've been handed a report from Human Relations Director Juanita Harwood, Harwood, excuse me. This report's prepared by her. On Wednesday, December sixth, twenty seventeen, the village held the annual tree lighting ceremony. The students from the A B G S Mill School choir and Front Street St. Carols along with the village chorus. Santa Claus was in attendance as well. A joyous time was had by all. On Thursday, December twelfth, twenty seventeen, the Human Relations Council held a monthly meeting. Tendies were Dorothy Porter, Rudy Sapp, Marilyn Belano, Burnett Willett, Bridget Barker, Kristen Reynolds, and myself, Juanita Harwood. Absent were Linda Carruthers, Terry Benz, and Marty Johnson. The council meant to discuss events for the upcoming year, which will be posted on the Village of Hempstead's community calendar. On Thursday, December fourteenth, twenty seventeen, the village held a festival of light ceremony. Rabbi Michael Eisenstein of Congregation Bed Ismail, Mayor Ryan, and the Board of Trustees along with village residents were attended for the lighting of the menorah. Thursday, December twentieth, twenty seventeen, the Human Relations Council packed toys to prepare for the annual village toy giveaway in conjunction with Toys for Tots. On Tuesday, December twenty-first, twenty seventeen, the village held its annual toy giveaway. This event helps families provide toys for their children. On Wednesday, December twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen, the village, in partnership with Operation Get Ahead, held its annual Kwanzaa program. Reports being handed from the hand to the left for the records.
Thank you.
Now at this time, we're going to have the Hempstead Human Relations Council, the City Association, Regional District Committee.
Uh, nothing to say.
Hempstead Housing Controlling Executive Director Rosemary Olson.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Trustees.
Good evening.
Our big effort for the month of December was completing our what a financial statement. It was filed with HUD before it was due, and with the federal clearinghouse, and we did forward it to Ray Pling, so he does have a copy of our what a financial statement if you wanted to take a look at it. For the second year in a row, we had no findings, and of course, we've filed it on time for the last four years. And, you know, that's all good things. We still are struggling financially because of loss of accounts and bills that we're still paying from problems prior to my tenure as the executive director. We also updated the emissions and continual occupancy plan for public housing to meet HUD's new requirements. It hadn't been updated since two thousand and seven, so it's been ten years, but it's updated to twenty seventeen standards. We'll be doing the same with Section Eight program. We also adopted a maintenance policy and procedures to formalize the process, you know, as required by HUD, and that's been distributed to the maintenance staff and office staff and HUD. In public housing, we've been working on renovating and leasing apartments to applicants off our waiting list, and in Section Eight, we've been interviewing and issuing vouchers. We're getting ready to begin the capital plan program for the year. It was just signed off by HUD, and so we're moving forward on that. Some of the things that we're going to be working on this year are painting, we need hallways in common areas at two sixty foot, and we truly sorely need that, you know, among other things, amongst some other needs that we have. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now at this time, we're going to have the Community Development Agency, newly appointed Commissioner, Charlene Thompson, come forward.
I would like to, if you'd do so, thank you. She's a new commissioner, she's a veteran of one day. I'll be giving you a report, and if you don't mind, maybe you could just share with them. You have impeccable credentials, so does your background, so they can feel comfortable as we do that you're going to take us to another level.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Trustees, it's an honor to be here. I am delighted and privileged to be of service to the residents of the Village of Hempstead. Just a little bit about my background. I am an attorney, practicing since two thousand five, excuse me, nineteen ninety-five. Since two thousand two, my area specialty has been housing and community development. I've had the privilege of serving actually with Rosemary Olson at the County of Nassau for eight years under two administrations, and in two thousand eleven, I transitioned out of the county government and started my own economic development consulting firm with my primary client being the state of New York. I have since suspended contracts as of December thirty-first upon this appointment, and I am, housing is a passion of mine, community and economic development, investing in my community has always been a passion of mine. I'm considered a community advocate. As quoted by Newsday, a community activist, an economic development activist focusing on housing and job creations for our community. This is a dream job for me. It allows me to bring to bear all of my experience, all of my knowledge, all of my grant writing experience. I am privileged and look forward to being impactful for the Village of Hempstead, bringing many more resources, financial resources, partnerships, grant opportunities, working with the town and the county effectively, and moving projects forward under the direction of the CBA Board and the mayor. So as you heard today, it's my first day on the job, so I don't have a comprehensive report, but what I can tell you that we are working on a ninety-day strategic plan overviewing current activities. I'm being brought up to speed this week on what's going on, what's pending, what's prioritized, and we will have a more formal report for you and a ninety-day strategic plan developed within the next two weeks.
Appreciate that. Wish you every success. I thank everybody for their warm welcoming of you. Would you mind entertaining a question too?
Not at all.
Anybody have any questions they'd like to ask?
Hi.
As a former colleague, I am glad and I congratulate the mayor and the board. Her and I worked in the same administration for eight years, and so I can tell you that she's highly qualified and more than competent to be able to fulfill the needs of not only the residents but the position and the challenge that it comes forth to bring the village to the twenty-first century in a sense of development, so.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, how many grants have you actually written, you know, that you got?
Well, during my time at the county, I worked on several of the HUD funded grants as well as New York State grants. I had two very specific projects that I worked on that were really developed, spearheaded by myself, I should say. One was Nassau Corridor, Nassau Corridor revitalization. You may recall early in the two thousands, well, maybe in like October of two thousand two going into two thousand three, you saw all those curb cuts and bump outs and the crosswalks with the brick paving. That was through a New York State Traffic Calming Grant, and my first week on the job was reading through Newsday, and they said the state can't even give away grant money for traffic calming. I said, "They have grant money they can't give away?" And so at the time, if you recall back then, when the county, Bay County Executive Swazi had gone around to all of the villages and done these listening tours and talking about revitalization, so I went to the engineering department and said, "Can I take your plan for Roseville and can I write a grant around it?" And we were very successful. We were awarded three hundred thousand dollars, and then Legislature to Abraham added about a million dollars so we could do it from the Devil Boy Malibu Corner all the way to the Southern State Parkway. So I spearheaded that project. Another project I'm very proud of was something called the Bio Partners Initiative, where we worked with local hospitals and laboratories to do what I call purpose-driven training. Oftentimes, we have wonderful training programs, but they don't lead to jobs. So we started at the end user and worked with the laboratories and the companies that were looking to, a lot of their workforce was aging out, so they needed younger hires. So we had the managers of those different Quest Diagnostic Lab Corps and then North Shore I J Laboratories design a six-week program that resulted in a certificate coming out where the people who went through the program could walk into any laboratory and inter-level job because the managers designed the program. And we were very fortunate to get an earmarked grant from then Congressman Gary Ackerman, and we were able to run two cohorts. Twenty-four individuals coming through the Department of Social Services, what we call the Well Future Work Program, were able to go through that program, and several of them ended up landing jobs at those laboratories. So those are just two that I did under the county. Since leaving the county, I've been very active with an organization called the Long Island African American Chamber of Commerce, working mostly with minority and women-owned businesses, where we've gotten funding through Wells Fargo and the U.S. Black Chamber to do capacity building training for business owners who would like to do contract with government and helping them get certified. So I wrote several grants where we were funded successfully to that program as well. That was more recently.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
I hope I don't be a thorny plant.
Well, I don't mind that. I can handle that.
But I want to ask you a couple of important, direct questions. Number one, it seems like the only time that minority community in the Village of Hempstead, which is just ninety-six percent, is important, is during election time. And I noticed that even with the Community Development Agency, all of the contracts that they give out tend to go to outside agencies, which then do not make it meet any minimum requirement of hiring people locally. My question to you, are you going to be a part of the mix, or are you going to do something to make sure that they hire people locally to go to work and that local minority contractors get a real opportunity? I don't know if these people get in the office and get bought out or what, but we need to see something different. We are dying here.
So I can tell you, I talked a little bit about what I've already done.
I'm familiar with you. I'm hoping.
Well, you know, and if you are familiar with me, you know that I'm true to my word. You know my walk. You know what I've been doing for the last fifteen or twenty years, even to my own detriment sometimes.
That's right.
And what I'm telling you is, two of the things, under the direction of the CBA Board, I'm hoping that we can implement some formal policies around contracting opportunities, particularly minority women-owned business contractor requirements. And, you know, any time we have community development funding, there's supposed to be a linkage with job creation. Now, it's still my first day on the job. I'm still learning all the internal policies and protocols, but I do come with the background of actually being a certified trainer for HUD, so I understand the HUD regulations and how the money should be spent. And so I'm making a commitment that it's done the right way. And I'm committed, as I said, I'm committed to reinvesting in our community and making sure that our businesses have the capacity to be able to service our government. And if they're not where they need to be, we need to work to help them to get there, and then provide them the opportunity where they can compete fairly. And so that's my commitment. I will share that with you.
I got a follow-up on that. The CRA, you talked about reinvestment, right? So Hempstead happens to be home to a whole bunch of national banks, and no one in the village that I know is making them accountable to their CRA responsibilities. Would that be something that you would be looking into?
Well, I know, see, working with minority business owners and through the Long Island African Chamber of Commerce, we have looked at CA, a lot of the larger banks have shifted their policies and protocols, and they're doing more global investment. And they're investing in organizations, CDFIs and financial institutions, and then make direct loans to other entities, minority business owners. So again, I would have to take a look at where we are and what's going on to see if there's an opportunity to move that conversation forward. CRA is always something we want to make sure that the local financial institutions are meeting their local obligations, but how their policies have shifted over the years, we have to be mindful of how we can shape that conversation to meet our local needs.
And so we have, I have identified with the last two years, as you know, my background in MWE.
Sure, absolutely.
Capable and rating companies that are Hempstead-based that have ten million, eleven million dollars for bonding, but yet they feel frustrated that time and time again, the opportunities that can't buy it. And the conversation we had with the mayor and the village attorney last time was, is there an MWE process in the village? And if there isn't, then either a resolution or rule should be adopted to make sure that the MWE entities have a fair shot at participating in the process. Otherwise, what you have is non-compliant MWE process that only aspirates to be used as a purpose of, here as a person of color, they might be participating, but at the end of the day, there is no substance behind that.
So I can't speak for the mayor, but I can tell you what I've seen as the issues on the state level, because I've done a lot of work with the state of New York on this very issue, and it's a two-pronged approach, right? So you have the government agencies and entities who need to have the policies in place with real accountability at that level, and see Shelley Grisley's here, so she's been a champion of making sure that she keeps us honest. So that's one part. But the other issue that I've found is our, many of our government, many of our local business owners are not where they need to be to be able to participate in government contracting with all the reporting requirements and protocols. So it's a two-pronged approach. We have to make sure the policies are in place and they are here too, but we also have to make sure that we have a critical mass of business owners who are ready, willing, and able, like your companies, there has to be more. We have services. The only thing government makes is money, right? Everything else can be contracted, personal services, goods and services, but we're not where we need to be. And that's what I've been working over the last several years with, not only the Long Island African American Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, we have strategic partners in the local Hempstead Chamber, Roseville Chamber, Uniondale, Margaux's doing a great job over there. We've been working with them to build the capacity of our business owners so they can position themselves.
I look forward to working with them.
I as well. Thank you.
Yeah.
I want to say congratulations. They helped build Hempstead. We're in good hands. She's a Delta, so we're good.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. You made me tear up here, okay?
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I echo what everybody says so far. I know Charlene, I reported it, African American Chamber of Commerce, and you started, and you're doing an excellent job.
And thank you, Madam Commissioner.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Just a prior to them, sorry, I'd be glad if you asked anybody, if anyone wanted to bring a question forward, it deals with a docketed item. Okay, listen, continue. Thank you.
I move that the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of December nineteenth, twenty seventeen, be dispensed with and that they be accepted as reviewed.
Trustee John?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Rinpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
We have resolved that the standard mileage rate paid to the village employees using their personal auto, van, pick, or panel truck for official business is fifty-four point five cents per mile. We have further resolved that the effective date of this standard mileage rate be January first, two thousand and eighteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Who?
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Rinpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption, that authorization is hereby granted for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees to be held on Tuesday, February twenty, two thousand and eighteen, and six thirty P. M. to be rescheduled to seven P. M., so as not to conflict with Greville's Day. Who? Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Rinpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption, that the provisions of Local Law one dash nineteen eighty entitled residency requirements for certain village employees are hereby waived for the following reasons due to special requirements needed to fill a position in a cashier for the Incorporated Village of Hempstead. Who? Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Rinpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption, authorizing the appointment of and/or salary changes for certain full-time and/or part-time employees of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead. Linger Valani, ninety-nine Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York, Department, Village Justice, Title Court Clerk, Grade eleven dash four, Old Salary sixty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars upon approval. This is a salary increase. This is not a new hire. Brian Farmer, ninety-nine Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York, Department, Village Justice, cashier, Grade five zero, new, Salary forty-six dollars, one hundred and nine dollars upon approval, new hire. Who?
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Rinpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk offers the following resolution for adoption, that all meeting bills including self-insurance funds ordered by the Board of Trustees on check warrant dated January second, two thousand and eighteen, to be approved as previously did.
Just writing on the front sheet.
Okay, I had got a move by Trustee Pettis, sent in by Trustee Johnson. Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Rinpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes. Any of the residents who would like, anybody, would like to bring up a question regarding any item of concern, this would be the time to do it.
Paying those rights on the residents, that we are higher than, you look over the civil services, you look over the civil service list, nobody from Hempstead was on that.
You know, if you don't mind, I'll make that safe and clear. One of our big concerns, one of the things we still have to work on is any Hempstead residents taking exams. This particular assignment, it was as a cashier, an exam was offered, and the list does not have anybody from Hempstead. Numbers one and two on the list declined. Now we did pick one of the next three, and we did so with the individual that was so mentioned. But again, this cashier, one, exam was available to residents, and we need to make sure that all of our residents take it. There's an issue of money, please send forward to us in a private-type setting so that we can accommodate you. We don't want someone not to take this exam because of course they're doing so. Thank you, Trustee Johnson, bringing that up. Okay, here we go. Congressman Lucas, is there five-minute limit? Thank you.
That's all. Good evening, everyone, and happy to get your audience. You know, I was going to talk about that non-resident thing, but apparently you explained to me that as a test prior to that, I'm sure we got cashiers in those Hempstead. Other than that, I see that the...
I don't think you understand that the civil service test that I went to Hempstead was...
What he's saying is...
You said they have cash in Hempstead, and it's not, nobody was more than that.
I didn't know with the civil service test.
That's why I...
That's what I was saying. I was going to... I'm talking about Hempstead. And yeah, I understand, I mean, we have three chiefs in the old house today.
I came at six o'clock and...
You can't even see any company. I see, all right.
Two of you said.
Yes. So therefore, what is the, you know, I would like to know the latest on shootings in the Village of Hempstead and other types of crimes in the Village of Hempstead, being that we are, it's been a brand new year, like you know, that. Also, that's good, that's good.
Well, the homicide from Christmas Day is still ongoing. Homicide is still seeking witnesses to come forward. They can remain anonymous, and there will be a fee paid for any information that leads to the conviction of the crime. There was also a shooting yesterday morning at one forty in the A. M. This victim was struck in the leg on Harriet. He states that he was coming from a party at fifty-five Harriet. He was totally uncooperative. He does not want to sign any statements. He refuses to name any witnesses for who the shooting may have been.
I'd say all that. Anyway, we can get around some of that nonsense, or they say no is no.
That's where we need the public to assist us with the crimes that are admitted. People do not want to come forward and make a statement. Nobody wants to come forward and make a statement. We cannot force them. But this is where we need to have a partnership between the residents and the police department.
Any other crimes on the side of the shooting?
Again, it's my first day back.
I can share something with the, with Lucas and the rest of the residents. With the homicide on Christmas Day, we've had two homicides from gunshot. There's been six murders this past year. Three occurred, that tragedy that we call Perry Street. There's also been a decrease in gunshot victims. That's obviously not a face situation. It's down actually from two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, forty-four percent, and over five-year average, which might be more indicative, it's down twenty-eight percent. The total gunshot victims in two thousand sixteen was thirty-seven. Two thousand seventeen, as of twelve seventeen, was nineteen, which would be a decrease of forty-nine percent. And over five-year periods, a decrease of thirty-nine percent. So these are some of the recent figures, again, of gunshots year-to-date. It was issued at twelve seventeen, in tragedy, as you know, we did have another homicide in a two-year period from then.
Okay, bring anything back, you know, all three of the chiefs, what could they have?
One of the chiefs is called...
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Here. Congressman Benjamin?
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. Let me first say to...
Bring the mic closer to you, man.
Let me first say, thank you to Trustee Lamont. I had a very critical situation, a young lady that was in my program, successfully finished the program and became a RN nurse. She's a nurse right now, and her kid just got ready to go to preschool and couldn't get into the school from the Village of Hempstead. And I called Trustee Lamont. He addressed the issue. I'm happy to say that she's in school yet right now, so I want to thank you for that. I appreciate your help in that area. Mayor and Trustee, Deputy Miss Brown?
No.
Did I miss something? I have to say this. I'm very concerned about... Uh, I'm, I'm, I have to say this, I'm, I'm very concerned about, uh, what's going on in terms of the village, in terms of opportunity for people to go to work. As you know, right now I have four people on internship working in my office. Well, I'm selling cans and bottles to try to keep those people there. I have five people working over at the school, um, right now, including the client that, uh, Mayor, you pushed to get there. And he's doing very well, by the way.
Appreciate that, and we're talking now in the academy school.
The academy school. Um, um, we had some people at Fifty Clinton Street, which is one of my primary concerns right now. They turned around and sold the building. And right after they sold the building, all efforts to hire locally have ceased. In fact, I'm not even getting phone calls, I'm asking you guys, uh, to do something to hold them accountable since they did get a tax break for that particular building and made all of these promises. Soon as they got the tax break, I think they were scheming. So they sold the building, and the new owners are not holding up to the obligations and the commitment that the old owners made. So I'm asking you guys to look into it, at least pull the tax break if they're not going to keep their promise and commitment, uh, to this community. The other thing is, I have not spoke very much at this, uh, the various meetings you guys have had here at the, uh, public hearing, simply because this is the new administration. But I would like to ask, since it is January second, um, what is this particular board going to do to ensure that local residents have an opportunity to go to work? I understand that the development project is all but pushed to the side, but our people need jobs. We have the worst unemployment in the entire Long Island, Nassau, and Suffolk County. Uh, what are we going to do to make sure local people get a chance to go to work? And again, I want to repeat something because I'm very concerned about it. All the politicians come here and make us all kinds of promises when they're running for election, and right after that, we get thrown aside. I would like to ask, what is this particular new administration is going to do to make sure the local people get training, get an opportunity to go to work at real jobs? I've been doing the best that I can. I've just spent twenty-one thousand dollars to get people trained to get jobs with no help from nobody. You guys took my funding, I'm not mad at you. I move on. What are you going to do to help us here locally? We need help.
Okay, we can take your funding, we can never fund it. You will get in your salary from another source.
I got my salary from the village, the village paid me, the CDA paid me.
You got the money from another source to wash. It was the money of the taxpayers' dollars.
Well, they really-
Let's move forward though. If we're talking about North Main Street, obviously with the new commission, I have optimism that things will be done. Problem is that everybody who comes into the room presently wants simply that built apartment buildings with pilots and no job boxes. And we have tried to avoid that consequence. We are looking to something with more imagination. We accept other interviews, and we are willing to help individuals who leave even a letter of recommendation from us as regards to a pilot if what they are doing does create jobs for our village residents. We know, of course, that an apartment building adds people. Plan originally go with some ten thousand more people in ten years. We know the school, Trail Park. We understand that if long pilots can be an expense on taxpayers. So we're trying to come up with a better answer with the new commission, we hope that can be resolved.
Mayor, I would like to humbly, if I can, disagree with you a couple of things. The number one is, the whole idea that we don't need housing is crazy. We have this young lady sitting right here, she had to stop getting her list. Are you still picking in people that need housing, affordable housing, or it's shut down right now?
We're always, we don't have the waiting, the waiting list is closed right now.
It's closed. But let me finish.
Just pause for a second. The need for housing has to be district law. It has to be county law. We have seventy percent of the eligible low-income housing in the village.
Thank you.
If you want to have housing for other people, go to other board meetings and advocate it. Because many of them have nothing, and everyone wants to, excuse the word, dump on the village of Hempstead. We need to share in that responsibility when it comes to low-income housing. We have more than our-
I don't, I don't have a problem with what you're saying in terms of other people sharing. But I'm still saying, there is a fact that we need housing here for people that live here. I'm not talking about bringing in people from the outside, I'm against that too.
You have to understand that the housing is going to be created is not to relocate individuals within the village. It is to bring in new individuals. The last person who requested a pilot, and we don't have the voice to say yes, no. All we can do is write a letter of recommendation or choose to write a letter that does not recommend. Their rents were going from twenty-five hundred to four thousand. And that's an expense that shows me in many instances that their interest is in making money, not really solving the issues of the individuals in Hempstead that could use housing. So we have to be a little bit careful. Most of the individuals that are coming in here are looking to make money. Lots are quick in their own pocket. And we need more people to come in with other ideas that can create not only just jobs but careers and make the community a better place.
Well, I agree with you on that, and you understand that that's what I'm trying to do in terms of creating opportunity for people to have careers and all that. But let's say the department you're talking about with housing is a valid argument. Still, my question remains the same. What are we doing to ensure that local residents have an opportunity to go to work? What do you guys have planned to help create job opportunity for people locally? That is my primary question.
I, I think there's going to be a boost in that direction with the CDA and then the director. We've been looking for a director for a while, we've got the right person. We haven't had a grant writer. We haven't had a grant writer in forever. So now we have that combination, and it should be exciting and get the answers we're looking for, all looking for. Meanwhile, those people who come in here and need some help, show that need and have jobs that are reflected at the end of the spring, we will write a letter of support if we feel it's justified.
Yeah, I've seen you do that. I'm, I'm not criticizing that. I know that we need, I have everybody seem to be in the village coming to me looking for jobs, and I don't even have the resources to help.
They come, obviously, to the village as well, and we have often used your resource, and we appreciate your effort, particularly in giving opportunity to individuals who are living in this society and would like to have an opportunity despite the fact that could be a PFL, a cryfall, or a offender.
I know my time is up, but I'm, I just want to say one thing. I am not exclusively working with ex-offenders, I wish they would stop telling that story. And I'm not exclusively working with men, I wish they would stop telling that story.
That's, that's fair to say as well, and I appreciate you here in both of those schools. Thank you. Jasmine, Gary?
Uh, good evening. Uh, just in regard to what Reggie Benjamin was just saying, I just want to share information. I saw in the local newspaper that the plumbing union, as well as the roadwork union in Nassau County, are looking for applicants. So I would hope that the village would spread that word to the churches and Reggie Benjamin's and whatever sources, resources he has. I can forward that information to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I, uh, wanted to express the will to give you a flyer that I handed out here tonight. Um, it has to do with the apartment building that Dell sold, sold property for three million dollars. It's all parking lot, it's all bus parking lot. Sold for three million dollars to a nonprofit called Center for Independent Living. And this center put up a sign on the fence that's by that vacant parking lot now. And, um, I reproduced it here. Uh, thanks to Terry Winston, who was alert enough to see this sign and, uh, sent me a copy of it. Um, it's in support of this house, the, the poster is in support of this housing. And, uh, from your statement there and from your previous statements, I think you have a problem with this, and I hope that you do have a problem with it. Uh, because they're trying to intimidate the community to accept this, and not only accept it, but to, uh, give them, uh, a twenty a pilot on it. And, uh, some of the information they put in here is incorrect in that it says that the current property tax is thirty-three thousand. That, that, and that, uh, they're trying to make it a hundred thousand in the future under a pilot. But that money gets divided to all the taxing entities. So a thirty-three thousand dollar thing, uh, thirty-three thousand dollars is more like fifteen thousand or ten thousand to the village. And the hundred thousand item is just divided to the county, the schools, and the other, uh, town entities. So, um, their figures are misleading here, number one. And what they're saying is that if we don't get this pilot, we're just going to leave the land vacant. And I think that's an idle threat, number one. And, uh, number two, I think it's insulting to people, uh, to be put in that kind of position that, oh, uh, what's the homeowners to support this pilot so that the homeowners can subsidize it? It, it's just really outlandish. And I hope that people in the community, oh, will take this serious and see how this is so manipulated because this is part of Renaissance thing. Renaissance has already put in, um, to the planning board for this particular project. This isn't something new that has come since Dell sold the property. They had this, working on this already. Renaissance is, is part of it as well as Dell in that whole land deal there. And, um, it shows how there is, you know, forces working together to the disinterest as far as I see it, uh, to what the people in the community seem to think and seem to understand at this point, uh, that while housing is a need, it certainly doesn't have to be filled by Hempstead, and it certainly doesn't have to be subsidized by the homeowners in Hempstead. Other communities need to do their share, and they've been irresponsible to the other communities, including Rockaway Center. We do have some low-income housing in Rockaway Center, but, uh, not compared to, uh, anything compared to what has existed here in Hempstead. But other communities have none at all. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I also wanted to bring to the attention of the people here that not only is this ninety-six unit looking for a pilot, there's another application by Renaissance, uh, right on the next block for two-hundred-and-fifty-five units. They want a pilot for that. And then Woods Partners, um, which is actually promoted by a resident of Hempstead, Rashid Wa- uh, Walker, I think his name is.
That's correct.
Uh, who, uh, wants to put another apartment building right on Main Street as well. I think that's like a hundred and fifty units. Again, most of these units are luxury apartments. The most they would ever have that's not luxury would be ten percent. And, um, the, the fact of the matter is that they're trying to bring people, uh, from all other communities to overcrowd this community and force the current residents out. Because once you start putting all these, uh, expensive apartments into the community, the existing apartment owners will see that as an opportunity to convert their own buildings, which are more, more in the lower-income area, uh, to higher income and force the current residents out. So this is very serious, and I hope you will all take it seriously. Thank you.
Do you have your copy for us? Will you bring it to us?
Gary, I, I have a question.
Certainly.
Because it seems like, um, in regards to the housing, you want it two ways. On one hand, you're saying that Hempstead should not want more affordable homes. That's more, more affordable housing, that's a problem. Then on the other hand, I hear you speaking about the high luxury rent, so, I mean, what's, what's way, what do you think it's supposed to go?
From my own, from my own point of view, and from my idea from a lot of people in the community.
I'm asking, I'm asking your opinion, because you say you have a problem with Hempstead being a place where, where we have a lot of low-income housing. And then you say you have a problem with luxury. The people who talk, you didn't say that, that's exactly what you said about the luxury apartments, about how much they're going to charge. So what, what do you think is the right answer?
I don't really understand your question, so you just, in other words, what I'm saying is that Hempstead already has a lot of housing. This is one of the most populated areas.
And you said it should be turned out?
Low-income, low and middle-income housing in this community. And I believe that other communities need to, if there's a need for low-income housing, other communities need to be forced to open up, uh, to, uh, fill that need. But for Hempstead, the idea of this particular master development agreement is to bring in luxury housing.
Okay, so you have a problem with both?
I have a problem with-
With luxury and low-income housing, that's what I'm going to-
I have a problem with housing coming into a community that's already overpopulated. You see, it's across the board, it doesn't matter.
So you have a problem with interactive housing? So you don't want affordable housing? You don't want luxury, you don't want any housing, that's what you're saying?
Basically, that's what I'm saying, because Hempstead already has, is overpopulated. And it seems to me to be insane to be talking about bringing more people into the community. And the ultimate thing of this particular plan is to force the people out of this.
I'm going to say one more thing, because it's a little bit of confusion in Hempstead about apartments. Many, many, much overcrowding is people that go into single-family houses. Fifteen to twenty people in single-family houses, that has nothing to do with luxury apartments. It has nothing to do with apartments. That's why, that's the main reason why Hempstead is overcrowded. Because we have, we have overoccupied homes.
Yes, I understand that.
Safety hazard, we've had deaths because people living on, on patios and things like that. That's what the real problem is, it's not so much, that's not, that's not what overcrowding is coming from.
That may be part of the problem.
Okay, well, that's-
In the apartment buildings-
As, as it stands today, that's what the problem is.
Overcrowding in your apartment buildings also. You have overcrowding in your apartment buildings also. And the fact of the matter is, there's overcrowding in all of Hempstead, and that is why I've-
Yes, single-family homes have fifteen to twenty people limited.
Okay, let's, uh, mention one quick thing. When a apartment complex or anybody of that matter is seeking a pilot, paying the group tax from town, Hempstead IDA, the IDA presently requires a letter from this body to say they were in agreement, or instead on the road. Now, let me just mention quickly, and I know this is a change in registration at the town level, but the members of the board for the IDA serve at the pleasure of the board of supervisors, not the town supervisor. And there is a difference there, which may seem, in my opinion, to mean that we're going to have the same type of requirement going forward that we now have in press. The town of Hempstead-
Would you repeat that?
Yes, the town of Hempstead IDA board is appointed, serves at the pleasure of the board of supervisors. It's not serving at the pleasure of the town supervisor.
The town council.
Town council. I used the wrong expression. Town council, thank you.
Which requires a majority for anybody to be-
Any change from the town of Hempstead IDA board is a town council that makes a determination and, and not necessarily the town supervisor. Fair enough, thank you. Theresa McNeil?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Um, Gladys, a few months ago I asked you about conversational Spanish for the residents of Hempstead, and you said you would check into it. It's been well over four months, and I have yet to hear anything.
Um, I, I think I mentioned to you that I spoke with the, with the director of the library, and she was going to work on that. Have you been to the library lately?
There's nothing there.
She has had a-
But I got, when you're under the finger of your hands, I should not have to keep running it down. You said you would handle it. You spoke up and said you would handle it.
Would you like me to call you back with the information?
I would appreciate it. Five point six.
What is your phone number?
Eight four one.
I'll give you the-
Okay, I'll get the phone.
It's public, that doesn't matter.
Conversational stand.
They can have-
I think we gave you a list of places in Hempstead where they have conversational stands.
No, you did not.
Did you have that?
No, you did not.
I thought you were getting it out.
The second thing was senior citizen tax exempt. How come we don't advertise that in the village of Hempstead? The town and the county advertises it. They contact you, they send you a letter when you're going to be in before you turn sixty-five to file for a tax exempt as a senior. How come in the village we don't do that? How come we don't try to help our residents, we keep everything a secret? I want to hear about a website. I did not have to have a website to purchase a house here at Hempstead. I do not have my website to pay these taxes. So that's not good enough.
Let's run back in a second. Now, you suggest in the mailing, is that what you suggest?
You, you have a le- the previous administration had a letter, newsletter that came out quarterly.
Yes.
How come it's not mentioned in there? You could spend our tax dollars on that. When I say you, not you personally, but the village could spend our tax dollars on that information. Send us information that can help us. Instead of digging our pockets, send us information that can help us. Give us some kind of assistance. It ended today. Did anyone know about it? I spoke to seven people. No one knew about it. That's why I got out my sick bed today to find out. Does it exist? And once I got here, I found out it does exist. So why is it a secret?
Well, not intended to be a secret, your suggestion is acceptable.
Why do, why can't it go out in the mailings that we send out? The publications that we send out, it should be in there. It only takes a line or two.
No, I think this is the reason for the Ocmite suggestions of this nature and others like this are positive. We'll move on.
I appreciate it. And how can we, the Incorporated Village of Hempstead taxpayers and you, the board members, get together to stop this railroading with all these tax exempts? It doesn't make any sense. We have problems with our sewer, our, we have problems with our water, we have problems with our schools, and we, we just want to keep putting housing in here and ignoring more people, and we don't have space. And the previous administration, the previous mayor had said, because Dorothy Gooseby came here one day, and she said her next-door neighbors had turned a garage into a housing, and he says, well, at least they keep the property up. He had no problem with it. He had no problem with it. What is the opinion of this current board?
You're suggesting that we are allowing pilots?
No, that we're allowing people to over, to just, like you said, overpopulate our single-family homes. The previous mayor had no problem with it. Because Dorothy Guzman came to this village meeting and she had a problem with it.
The building department will be notified. Here's specific addresses. We'll make sure that they get those addresses instead of... A person had to review that.
So how can we get together to fight the IDA, to challenge the IDA, to stop putting this housing? We cannot afford this. Our schools can't afford it, our plumbing can't afford it, sewer, we cannot afford it.
No, the water and sewer issue is the forefront. No one is going to build apartment complexes with IDA money from the town of Hempstead IDA. We've got a lot of support from this body.
No one, so when Dell says, when this, Dell sold their property, I think we have someone from Dell here. Dell sold, you worked for Dell. You did something for Dell. We were at the IDA meeting and you spoke very...
I spoke under behalf.
Yes, you said how well Dell was. You said Dell was an excellent employee. Dell, Dell has allowed village residents to, to, to work for them and surge.
That's the reason why the mayor supported it.
Yes, that, you were there that day too. But I don't see where anyone's surging at except surging in our pockets. So what can we do? What can we do to stop this?
I believe Dell is going to create additional jobs.
Forty.
They are.
Four, and how many will be for village residents?
The majority of those jobs will be village residents.
And will people be able to make a comparable income where they can afford to pay the rents to live here and the taxes?
It is my understanding to answer that question is that they do.
Do we have that in writing?
We do.
And okay, do you, we can see that paperwork?
It's fine, but I, I, I think that was the wrong argument. We were talking about apartment complexes that want to be built concurrently. I don't think Dell's a good example. I think they fall under the example of where a pilot is useful to the extent that additional jobs slash careers are available for village residents. They were going to move out of town. It's rather happy to hear.
We got to stop allowing people to back us in the corner and say they're going to walk away. Let them walk the F away. We're sitting in tire. They use, they've been using that. I've been here for 35 years and I've been hearing that same excuse for 35 years. If you don't give us a tax break, we're going to walk away. But guess what? Somebody else will come because it always has. And it will continue on because we spend money. Minorities spend more money after-tax money than anyone else. So they will come here. They will come. We need to stop letting people back us in that little corner telling us, well, if you don't, you'll walk away and leave it vacant. Hey, let it go.
Now, wasn't quite the discussion we had with them. And I would disagree with you in terms of Dell. I think we're doing the right thing there.
But I'm saying according to this one here. That's what they said. We'll walk away, walk away.
But that statement there doesn't necessarily mean we're going to write a letter in agreement. We haven't supported the fact that they're going to build something across the way in any of those four corners except the one that Dell occupied.
But when have we challenged the ID, how many times have we challenged the IDA in one?
No.
No, that's not true now. The IDA sends to us what's going beyond the document and they look to whether or not we're going to let, write a letter of support or not. So there, there is this...
So how many letters of, of support, of non-support have we sent? And they move forward on it irregardless?
None of the apartment buildings that were going to be used on the parking lots that are down market is under this administration. We haven't heard no letter of support for any of the apartment.
So you're saying they only say yes when you say, when we write a letter saying, yes, we support it. And the majority of times when you say we don't support it, they, they don't move forward with it?
No, here's the way it works. If they're willing to build and get permits to do so and are paying all of the taxes, they're going to move forward if they can settle the water and sewer problem. Saying that, if they're looking for a pilot, the town of Hempstead IDA requires a letter of support from this body. Without that letter of support, it's dead on the road.
And do we still have members from this village or from this board on the IDA board?
When it deals with the Hempstead issue, yes.
And how many, you have two?
Four.
Oh, we have four, man. I know Stacy, Stacy, one of them.
Yeah, I'm right there, Mr. Lucas.
Yes.
Stacy, Lucas, and who else?
We have, um, let's see, we have someone...
Reggie Lucas is one of them.
I said Lucas.
Deborah, about Saul.
No, no, no. The attorney lives on Thorn Avenue. I'm looking right at him.
Francis.
Francis, uh-huh. And who's the fourth one? That's three.
Francis Nichols.
Francis Nichols.
Francis Nichols.
Oh, Francis. Okay, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Louis Mendez?
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor, trustees, public. Some of the things that were said today, they warrant some clarity. The Dell Bus situation, I think, is a perfect example of how ineffective pilot support and ineffective construction with jobs that lead to actual benefit to the village residents is, is the way to go. I think from the perspective of downtown redevelopment and going back to the pilots, nothing keeps this board from reinforcing the pilots that have already been awarded. So I think there's 20-something pilots. Every three years, each pilot is subject to revision and compliance. And in order to do job creation, the pilots are awarded, in fact, with MWD requirements. The unfortunate thing, Mayor, is that not that many entities like yourselves go back to the board and complain about the lack of job creation that Reggie was talking about. So in the, in, in each pilot, you could revise it. I'm sure you have attorneys to do that. And now you have a CBA commissioner to do that also. You look at the pilots that have been awarded, the pilots that are active, and you look at the time that they have that are coming to revision. In that revision, you look at the job creations they have done. You look at the MWD opportunities they created because they're mandated to do so. And if they don't, you resent those pilots. Simple as that.
Ms. Mendez, you had requested a meeting and I...
And we got, we got into a, a phone call pertaining to a process of compliance. And now that you have a CBA commissioner, I think that you're going to get that compliance in order to afford the opportunity also. Thank you so much, I'm that it. And so from the perspective of community benefit agreement and job creation, it is in fact 25% mandated contracted component and a 25% job component that allows people like Reggie and other entities to operate and create job opportunities for those. The unfortunate thing here that we're missing as a, as a community is job training that leads to a solid career. Because these are not jobs, these are careers. You trained somebody in any one of the trades. You're giving them the opportunity to build careers, right? So no one is engaging the trades to be able to train these folks because there's no jobs underlying to be able to do that. So i- if you train people and you don't lead to a job, then the people get discouraged. So if you engage training and you use your pilot enforcement as a tool to be able to create that job, you will have compliance, you'll have job creation, and you will have participation of local residents. It's simple. It sometimes be complicated to a point where it fits the need of naysayers or yaysayers. All I'm saying is enforce what you've got. You've got pilots and you're giving away. And every three years, there's revisions. Go back to each pilot, revise it, enforce whatever they're supposed to be giving you. And then through that enforcement, you can also use MWD even at the county level. The IDA is under MWD law that I told you about. So from that perspective, you've got plenty of compliance to do so to be able to obtain that, those, those benefits to the town, the village residents. And that is a fact. If you do that, people will be better off when they come up here and talk about pilots. They won't just be a negative. You will be able to show that through compliance, you've got a benefit for the residents of the village of Hempstead. Thank you. I have a meeting, by the way.
I broke into a meeting with you just to discuss that type of issue.
Okay.
And also, we do have a group looking to us for a possibility of a pilot. They have not yet submitted to writing, so I won't comment further except part of that is job training.
I, I had a conversation with the master developer and I encouraged him that if he submits a pilot application with a utilization plan already included, which is a commitment to hire those entities prior to the submission for a pilot application, it kind of gives you a set, a set of tone. And that utilization process is part of the compliance.
And who is the...
That will be Mr. Monty. I spoke to him about three years ago on this. I'm trying to explain an example.
I believe that 51% of that project is now part of the dollar.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
And Don Monty only has 25% that remain, say 50%. Actually, it's Scott Regler who more meets the definition.
Exactly. So if you talk to Scott Regler and if he submits something, you know, showing you that he is willing to comply with the 25% already ahead, you're ahead of the game on compliance.
Yeah, we, we reached out to him. He's been in the office once. We want him back and we can't encourage him to do so.
So the goal here is to, if you're able to award a pilot that already has compliance built into it, then people will see the benefit down, immediately, not down the road or maybe being lied to. That's basically it. Regardless of who you engage as far as developing. It could be Scott Regler, Don Monty, or anybody else for that matter. I was using that as an example. Thank you very much.
I would like to mention to you, under the heading of previous village residents, Grantford Hempstead High School has just been named the acting sheriff. It's a very flood, natural camp, acting sheriff. So that's a proud moment. She is a hempster, great. Talked to her yesterday. Thank you, bud. Alain Sanamouz.
Trustee Johnson? Trustee Perez? Trustee Rodriguez? Trustee Ripro? Mayor Ryan?
Yes. Good night, everybody. Happy New Year.